All right, it's looks like it's 6:00 PM my watch and called to order. This is Mayor Rich Landsberg. It's July 21, 2020. I would like to make clear for the record this meeting and it should be reflected in the minutes of our meeting that this regular city council meeting of the Woodland City Council will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order This meeting will be held via teleconference and council members will participate only by teleconference. The members' locations are not listed on the agenda and are not accessible to the members of the public at this time. The public is encouraged to listen to the city council meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20 and also by going to the City of Woodland website at www.cityofwoodland.org/meetings. If a member of the public wishes to make a comment during the general public comment period or on a specific agenda item, there are two ways to do that tonight. First, members of the public were invited to contact our number at 661-5900 and leave their message by voicemail. All voicemail messages received by 6:00 PM tonight will be played during the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. If there's something in writing, an email, it will be read into the record at that time as well. Any member of the public watching the live stream who wishes to make a comment on an item as it is being heard may submit an email to the city clerk on an item that is being on the on the agenda. The clerk's address is councilmeetings@cityofwoodland.org. Make sure you get that in prior to the public comment on that agenda item. The record will be amended by that and only limited to three minutes. Please include the agenda item on your message. We're going to be at this point and we were in closed session on a couple of items. And before going into our specific agenda tonight, the city council voted to appoint our interim city manager Ken Hyatt as our permanent city manager effective August 1 of this year. His contract, which will go into effect at that time, is included for approval on the consent, however, we'll be pulling the contract portion of the consent calendar in order to make some minor adjustments to that contract that were discussed in our closed session. And there are no other reportable actions as a result of our closed session. When item C, new call to order, the regular session will now start. We should all come to order. Madam Clerk, we're going to go to item D, roll call. Would now be appropriate for you to conduct roll call and each member of the council should identify themselves during the roll call period. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Landsberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Yes.
Thank you. I would now like to request that each council member respond to these questions. Mayor Pro Tem Stalard, can you hear me well?
I can. Thank you.
Councilmember Barajas, can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you, and I would now like to ask if each of you has a copy of the agenda for the meeting. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes, I do.
Let me hold you up for a minute. There seems to be a lot of background noise. If you can, if you're not talking, please mute yourself. And Madam Clerk, please start over with the with that question.
Okay, I'd now like to ask if each one of you has a copy of the council agenda. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I do, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, have you posted tonight's agenda, a location that is reasonably accessible to the members of our public?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. The record then should reflect that all council members are present tonight for this teleconference and have indicated that they have their agendas and they are able to hear the proceeding. At this time, I'm going to ask other members of the city to introduce themselves and their positions so that we can acknowledge their attendance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ken Hyatt, interim city manager is present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Cara Uweta, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Ana Gonzalez, City Clerk.
Can I hold up for just a second and I see the J is with you. So whenever you talk, Ana, I'm getting terrible noise. Is everybody else getting that same noise?
I think they're nice.
Yes, lots of noise.
Okay, we know that Ana's here. Mr. Hyatt, are there other members of your staff present?
There are. Let me acknowledge that Derek Cap, our police chief, Eric Zane, fire chief, Christine Angle, community services director, Craig Locke, Public Works Director, Brent Meyer, acting community development director, Kim McKinney, our finance officer, and Scott Sowen, our IT manager, are all present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Now, as we go through our agenda tonight, I would request that before you speak, please identify yourself each time you speak. For example, this is Councilmember Rodriguez, et cetera. Let the individual speak and please do not interrupt them while they're speaking. I would also ask and continue to ask, to this extent possible, mute yourselves so that we don't get unnecessary background noise. I want to make sure that members of the public can hear what we have to say. But also, I'd like to advise all council members and the city clerk that any votes taken tonight during this teleconference portion of our meeting must be taken by voice roll call. I would ask that Madam Clerk take that roll call for any and all votes tonight. Now, as I go through the agenda, I also request before speaking, whoever it is going to be speaking, please identify yourself each time. Now, we're going to begin the agenda and we're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask Sergeant Rodriguez, Councilmember Rodriguez, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
You, Councilmember Rodriguez. I'm going to go to item F. And, Madam Clerk, since city council chambers are closed to members of the public, have you received any comments, member of, either by voicemail or by email or some other form?
I do not have any email messages, but there is a voicemail message that IT will be playing for you.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Deborah Bernstein from Spring Lake. I am representing the Yolo ACLU and celebrating the 30th anniversary of the American Disabilities Act, celebrating the progress and the inclusion that that act represents in the spirit of John Lewis. We are joyous in celebrating that act. We've come a long way. We have much longer to go. Please put this in the record. The Yolo ACLU is celebrating the 30th anniversary of the ADA. Thank you. My number is 847-687-8409.
And that's all we have.
Are there any hands raised, Madam Clerk, that wish to make a comment?
Let me check that right now. I do have.
No hands are raised.
I do have two hands raised. I'm allowing James Glicka turn for this. James, can you hear me? James, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi.
I can hear you. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Landsberg and honorable members of the city council. I am James Glicka Hernandez. I live in Woodland. I am the former chair of the Yolo County Locomental Health Board and the California Local Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions Governing Board. I will be very brief. I simply wanted to say thank you for the resolution regarding the 30th anniversary of the ADA. As you know, it protects people with physical and mental health from discrimination and provides access and support to that population. The ADA has been a lifesaver to many people from being discarded really and ignored in society. So I just want to thank you for this wonderful proclamation. And and I want to thank especially Councilmember Rodriguez for supporting this proclamation in the beginning. So, thank you.
Thank you, James. Madam Clerk, are there any other hands raised?
Yes, I have one other here. Let me let me get to that. Hello, Megza, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Okay, well, thank you. Good evening, city council members. I sent an email regarding, and I'm just going to go ahead and read it because I didn't get a response back. So there has been recent sexual misconduct slash criminal allegations brought against Councilmember Angel Barajas. There are also two organizations that are speaking on this matter. These allegations are, of course, very concerning and inexcusable. These two posts that were on social media platforms, these women state that he was physically and mentally abusive towards them. I believe any elected official needs to be transparent. Barajas is a current city council member and soon to be county supervisor. I don't believe a representative of our city nor county should behave like this at all and should not be representing our community. So I call for this matter to be discussed at this meeting and Barajas needs an answer to these allegations and for the record and council members as well need to take a stance on this type of behavior, even if it's by their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Let me say this as mayor. This matter is not on our agenda and I understand that member of the public wishes council to comment on this. This is not on our agenda, nor do I believe it's the correct forum for these kinds of things. I am aware that Councilmember Barajas has already separately responded to these allegations and council will not issue a response at this time. Would ask that we move on. Thank you very much. Is there any other members of the public that have a hand raised?
No.
Thank you. We're going to go to item B, which is staff or council comments. I'm going to start with myself actually tonight. We go to different order tonight than usual. And I don't have a lot to talk about. I was actually sick for about a week, being a little better. But I just wanted to make a comment about how we learned to adapt this year to this COVID-19. This last Saturday was supposed to be the big wedding celebration of my daughter. 250 guests at the Hotel Woodland. That didn't happen. Instead, we all met in Orange County, which is really not practicing the safeguards for their community. But we met outdoors to a very quaint, only 14 people attended the wedding of my daughter. But you know what? She's married and that's that's all that really counts. And I'm glad it's done and we learned to adjust and we move on. And that's life, isn't it? That's the only comment I have tonight. I'm going to now go to Councilmember Tom or Mayor Pro Tem Stalard.
I didn't hear you address me. I'm so sorry. Yeah, well, thank you and congratulations, Rich, on your daughter's marriage. And indeed, it is a time for all of us to be far more flexible perhaps than we thought we'd ever have to be. But we are managing. I want to congratulate everyone in Woodland on the completion of West Main Street. It was two years and actually a lot of years to get done. But that street looks great now. I especially thank the merchants on both sides of the street that had to deal with the confusion and difficulty of accessing their businesses during the long time. But we were solving almost 100 years of problems in the roadbed and they're all done now and it's very nice. I want to mention that the Councilwoman Barajas and I participated in the Valley Clean Energy Meeting. Valley Clean Energy has been delivering power now for two years. We just had our second anniversary. And we're we're doing reasonably well. We have plenty of challenges. The California Public Utilities Commission has made our life somewhat difficult by forcing us to make greater payments to the pre-existing utility. Also, we're having challenges with with one supplier who entered into a contract with us that hasn't been able to develop the resources necessary to deliver. So we're working on through all those things. Also, even after two years, we've had two recent retirements and so we have new people joining the staff. But overall, the organization is moving forward and doing a good job. I'm also kind of in the last lap of my year as president of the Sacramento Valley Division of the League of California Cities. That's 71 cities from Sacramento County North to the Oregon border, excepting the coast. And we've had to give up all our quarterly meetings where we gather in cities and learn about the good practices of our various cities who participate. So it's been a disappointing year for that, but still, the thing that's really great about cities is even though we're all so unique and individual, we still have a lot in common. And there's so many ways that cities support each other, including city managers. Ken Hyatt participates with managers from other cities throughout the division. And when there's a real need, they can come through and help each other. That's one of the good things about cities. Also, we had a two-by-three-by-two was delayed a week, but we had that last week. Councilwoman Soschi Rodriguez said we had to have that meeting and we had it. And it was very interesting. Obviously, the focus at the moment is mostly on COVID implications for our public schools. And we know how deeply our parents want their children to be back physically in a classroom with a teacher present. But you know, that is a decision for the school board and they they are this may not even be their decision anymore. The governor has pretty much stated what the terms are going to be. But I think Superintendent Pritchard, as you reported at the two-by-three-by-two, is taking a wise approach, which he's talking about a phased restarting of our schools, starting with the distance learning, but watching the progress of resolution of our current difficulties and phasing in participation, actual physical participation. It may not be a five-day week initially. It may be two days. It may be alternate groups on different days. But in any event, I just think we, as a council, need to take our hats off to our school board, respect them for the decisions they're compelled to be making and and help them wherever we can. There's also concern that childcare is to become extremely difficult for people. And you know, anybody that can help there, you know, it's certainly welcome. Parents are in a difficult situation when their children are at home and mom and dad both have work obligations. State of city, state of the city occurred last Wednesday. That was Chamber of Commerce event. I want to congratulate Mayor Landsberg. I want to congratulate city manager Ken Hyatt. They both did videotaped presentations, which I thought was especially good way to do it in this year. And then with some live questions thereafter. Thank you. I learned some things myself listening to the reports. I want to mention that, you know, coming up in our August calendar, our meeting on the August 18th will be a little program to add a rain garden at Crawford Park. It's kind of an experimental way to provide for onsite drainage. It's been in the works for some time. The local government commission basically got a grant of $60,000 and $49,000 of us coming to Woodland. So we'll be hearing more about that, but it's really a cool idea and take that rain instead of just putting it in the storm system, finding ways to percolate it onsite. But that'll be coming to Crawford Park. Now, the last thing I want to do is say, congratulations, Ken. You certainly deserve, earned and deserved the nod the council has given you tonight. Many people at City Hall tell me how it's almost like the last city manager didn't even leave. I mean, you've just picked the ball up and run with it and then you have all these additional problems which were present before you became interim and you've handled them all. And and it seems like things are going fine for our city. I just want to thank you and congratulate you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Then I'll go to Councilmember Barajas.
I thank you, Mayor Landsberg. I just want to thank the staff, the contractors, the city council on the completion of Main Street reconstruction. You know, that's been a large project for many, many years. And I know most of the council members that are currently serving, serving played a instrumental part in getting that project up and running. And so now, as we finish one project, we're going to move over to Court Street project. And I'd like to also thank the the community who was patient during that time, the business owners that were also impacted and patient at the time. And we're just trying to reconstruct a lot of our roads that are outdated. And it's about time that we move in that direction. I'm happy to to say that we completed at least the Main Street project. I've been working with our city manager Ken Hyatt and some small business owners on Main Street to find ways where we could have rapid testing for COVID-19. As you know, some of the small business owners have about five to 20 or less employees. One affected positive test of COVID-19 means that most likely the whole business will shut down. What we're trying to do is insert and work and collaborate with the fire department in Dolar County to see if we can be, we can have rapid testing for those small businesses. I look forward to our next meeting in August 18th to talk about the apprenticeship language that we talked about as a council in November and bless the concept. I look forward to being able to get that type of language into our city contracts and see how we can be able to develop work, our workforce development. And also our homeless relocation center on Beamer and Road 102 is is understanding that we're working on it and we've been moving in the right direction. And I look forward to one day when it's completed where we can be able to successfully relocate the homeless shelter. And congrats to our mayor, Rich Landsberg, for your daughter getting married. Congratulations and also on your great speech, the State of the City speech. I was able to see it and I was able to also learn. And also Ken Hyatt, our city manager, for participating as well. And I believe our council member, Mayor Pro Tem, Tom Stalard. So I thank you all and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Landsberg. Just want to relate to the public that I was able to connect with our Yolo County Assessor Clerk Recorder, Registrar Voters, Jesse Salinas, who is orchestrating the election organization for this year and trying to navigate around all of the difficult obstacles that are posed to an elections office due to COVID-19. And I'm confident that with his leadership that we'll be situated as a community to safeguard the democratic liberties of all residents here in town. That being said, where are we in the process of prepping? Our leader, Mr. Salinas, is working with partnering agencies, community members to finalize the locations that he's mandated to, a number of locations. He's mandated by state law to find at least three appropriate locations throughout town. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to cooperate with our local partners to secure those locations so that we can best serve our public. Beyond that, and I I just wanted to relay that I won't be seeking reelection in 2020, this year in November. I don't mean to steal anyone's thunder. I just wanted to make this public. You know, this was kind of propelled by the fact that the filing period is coming to a close in about two weeks here, three weeks, two and a half weeks. And upon receiving an email from our beloved editor of the Daily Democrat. So I didn't want to provide any delay. With that, I just want to share something that I shared with my supporters on election night in 2016. This is my philosophical view of public service. I'm not trying to lecture or pontificate or offend anyone, so please bear with me and please don't take offense to what I'm saying. But back when I had hair and I was attending a small liberal school in the East Bay, I took a constitutional law class that very much morphed and and kind of molded my views of civil service. And in that class, we looked at a number of early documents, early being the documents around the days of our nation's founding. And the document that that struck me the most, because of the democratic principles that it represents, is the Pennsylvania State Constitution of 1776. I'm not talking about the Declaration of Independence. I'm talking about Pennsylvania State Constitution, which happened to be drafted by Benjamin Franklin and a couple other gentlemen from the state of Pennsylvania. And in that document, there are a number of provisions that reflect kind of the outlines and parameters of public service. Those provisions outlined, you know, particular terms and term limits on service. No state representative, for example, could hold office for more than four years in any seven-year period and, you know, sheriff's and coroner's, for example, could not serve more than three consecutive years in a seven-year period. And so when I ran for office, I very much intended to abide by that principle that which is that good, democratic-loving people should take time out of their lives to sacrifice for the benefit of their community. I'm not, you know, a good person, maybe. I don't know. I'm not, you know, a good person, maybe. I don't know. I'm still trying to prove that. But, you know, I believe in the principles of our democracy and those have motivated me to serve and to have a short political life. So without being too long winded and and too much of a pontificator. I'll just say that it's been a pleasure to serve my community. And that, you know, if my spirit so compels me in the future, I would be honored to to serve this community or any other. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez, for those words. To make us a very short comment, you will be missed. No question on this council. Now I'm going to move to, let's see, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Folks hear me okay? All right, well, I want to first take a moment to. To address the comment by by Miss Padilla today. You know, as a woman, I, you know, undoubtedly represent a woman in our in our community. And I know this is a very uncomfortable topic. Nonetheless, there's, you know, it's it's there's serious accusations out there. Towards my colleague and my recommendation to to my colleague is, you know, that he that he addressed these and whichever platform he feels is is appropriate. On my end, and this hasn't been easy, I've I've taken a few few calls from folks that have reached out, including women. And I'll tell you, it's 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 saddening, I, you know. Lots of mixed feelings, but at the end of the day, I feel that, you know, my colleague will know what to do. I feel that he will find the right way to address the community. I do want to say that, you know, I've had a call or two. From with male leaders that, you know, in some way I felt were were upset about women speaking out when, you know, I felt that, you know. These women were not the ones creating the disturbance. So I'm not going to go on too much on this, but I, you know, like to encourage that this, you know, this be addressed by my colleague and. And yeah, I'm. Had a few phone calls with him and I think he he will do what he feels is right. Moving on, I want to thank Code Enforcement Officer Minnie Garcia. For taking me on a ride along through town. That said, Mr. City Manager, I will have some, probably some stuff to bring back and questions on on code enforcement. You know, I have to give it to Minnie Garcia. She does a stellar job. And when I walked away from from the ride through town, I felt like it'd be great if we can duplicate her. So we'll see, a lot of work to be done there, but I I appreciate her taking me around around town and getting me familiar with with areas of need. I want to thank staff as well and my colleagues for our public safety meeting held this past week. As well as the three by two by two education ad hoc. I know that the school board and Yellow County Office of Education have their hands full with the upcoming reopening of the schools. Yesterday, also, we also had a yellow habitat conservancy meeting. I encourage folks to to visit that website to find out what's going on with the conservancy. Finally, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on the state of the city, your daughter's wedding. I know folks also are going to be excited out there about Main Street reopening. It's been a been a smooth ride, so I guess, you know, these COVID times have allowed for us to catch up on on those road projects. Very good. So before I wrap up, as election day approaches. I want to inform my community about my intentions for District Five representation. I will not be seeking reelection this upcoming November. I have deliberated for months about this important decision. And given the open nomination filing period, I want to be fair and respectful to my district. And those intent interested in running for office for Council District Five. Serving as mayor and councilwoman to to this to the city of Woodland has been such a rewarding and invaluable experience. I love what I do and I appreciate my community and the opportunity to serve them. I plan to continue my work as an advocate for Woodland. You can count on that. Separately, I will continue to fulfill my duties as a governor appointee for the State Department of Veterans Affairs. Advocating for minority and underrepresented veterans. In California, we have just over six hundred and sixty thousand veterans out of the nearly one point six million. I will also continue my service in the Army Reserves. I'm not going to be far. Woodland will still be my home. Public service has always been my passion. I look forward to the opportunity to serve my community again in the near future. And with that, I want to thank my community for for their support, for all the love. I will, I will be here, like I said, and I hope to continue advocating for my community. Rest assured and hope that in the near future to come back in another capacity to serve my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Another shock to the community that two of you tonight could have made that announcement. I want to thank you for your service. I know you've worked very hard for your community, your district. You also will be sorely missed on this council. You brought a lot of input, a lot of insight, a lot of good intellect. I will miss you as our council. So lots of news tonight, as you can see, ladies and gentlemen. No comment, Mr. Steller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank our colleagues that have made their announcements. It's it's we get awful used to working together. We've been working together for for years. And we're going to miss these dear people and and. By the way, Jake Comer, we can hear you. You must have a live mic. In any, in any event, you know, I don't want, I don't want the community to think we're all we're all leaving. I I completed my filing today for another term. So District Two, I hope will see fit to return me to office. And I haven't any dramatic things to say with respect to the future. I think the fact that we're coping as well as we are right now speaks pretty highly of the team in place and the job that all of us have been doing. And we have, we will continue to do that, obviously maintaining, keeping the ship afloat fiscally is a big thing as we go forward. Renewing Measure J in November so that we have a quarter cent sales tax that help with our library and our program for kids. And hell and and utility relief for those who need help. Those are important things to do and I hope I'm here to help do them regardless. I'll help do them. But I would be happy to do them again, continuing as a member of this council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Steller. Now I'm going to go to our city manager Ken Hyatt for his comments and discussion of the calendar.
I should stop that one message right.
Members of the council continues to be a very challenging, busy time, but just wanted to share a few highlights from the last few weeks. Last week in particular, I attended with Principal Engineer Tim Bush, the Best Army Corps of Engineers Agency Milestone Hearing in Sacramento. Where we presented to Army Corps Headquarters and regional and statewide staff on the status of the project. And the progress for the lower cash free flood control project. Please to report that the headquarters authorized moving forward with the feasibility study. And we are now on pace, I believe, within the next four to six months to complete that study. And a very critical and important phase of that flood control project. Also want to mention that yesterday Chief Caff did a fantastic job facilitating a group of community members and. Decision leaders and organizations in our community invested in our youth, those youth that are at potential and promise. So as part of our revisioning of the Y-Grip efforts, we've been now engaged in two conversations with this group to help. Kind of reframe and recast where we're heading and identify more deeply some of the challenges that Woodland has been facing. Respect to youth and the gang activity. And it's been some great feedback from the community and our partners to help define a better course and a better path. So looking forward to defining with that group a new strategy or set of strategies that we will partner with. And to to help sort of change some of the trends and do a better job supporting the youth in this community. Also, as we know, right, fire season is heating up, so Woodland Fire Department has sent a strike team down to the mineral fire last week. And they are now headed up North State to assist with several fires that are burning up there at the moment. So our thoughts are with them as they travel and continue to to do good work. And then lastly, you know, weekly COVID update. We obviously continue to monitor very closely what's happening statewide as well as locally here with respect to trends. With the pandemic, the transmission rates as of this evening, the county's dashboard reports twelve hundred. To Woodland here, so we continue to want to press upon the community the importance of washing your hands, distancing and face covering. But at the same time, you know, let people know that we do have services and opportunity for people to get access to testing. Starting next Tuesday evening, Optum Serve, who was here back in June, will be returning to Woodlands and providing free testing. This time at the Woodland Community College, they will be hosting Optum Serve. And that will last through, I believe, near the end of August, at which point we will transition in partnership with the county. To provide a rotating testing facility throughout the cities and the county. Locations as we as we work through the balance of this this pandemic. And then lastly, you know, as we've been watching the ever changing requirements and guidelines coming out of the state as well as the CDC. Our business community continues to have to respond very quickly to to changing rules and regulations. And we are actively engaged in responding to either citizen inquiries or business inquiries regarding what the rules and and standards are. The governor recently announced that more and more businesses now are allowed to operate in an outdoor environment. So that's created more opportunities for us to support the businesses we have here in town. Format, so much happening naturally around COVID and we'll continue to keep the council and community updated on that. And then turning real quick to the long range calendar with the adjournment of the meeting tonight. We will be entering into the council recess, summer recess, so that'll be a four week period and then read adjourn on August eighteenth. And on the long range currently for the eighteenth, Councilmember Barahas mentioned the apprenticeship workforce development programs, which the council took up. Back in December, we're working to bring back that discussion topic and recommendation relative to how to support apprenticeship programs. Here in our community and region. And then we will also have a presentation from the Woodland Chamber of Commerce. I'll provide an update on the activities that they've been engaged in through this pandemic. And some thoughts and strategies for the coming year to support the business community here. We also hope to have the Youth Master Plan MOU with the school district, which staff and the school district have been working to prepare. This master plan will involve two fight, two phases, probably. The first phase being a comprehensive assessment of the services that are currently being provided here in the community. That will both be, you know, an assessment of the services in terms of outcomes from those services. How many individuals are being served and specifically by age and category and the way that they're being served. That will then inform the second phase of the master plan, which will identify strategies for the community. As well as the city to continue to support youth within our community. And we'll have a close relationship to where our efforts with the Y-Grip Steering Committee is heading. So with that, that concludes my remarks. I'll return it back to the council. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. I do have a question for you. As you know, council, as well as members of the public, are interested in hearing news or updates. On the public participation on recent events that we have promised the public we're going to be doing. Hopefully sometime in August. Can you give us any kind of update on where we're at?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So as we discussed at the Public Safety Committee of the Council last week. The chief and I are preparing an outline for a community forum where we will allow the department to present to the community. The current policies and practices within the departments, some of the things that are currently being considered to be amended. As well as a process for a more comprehensive assessment of all the policies and practices and procedures relative to policing in our community. We then want to also provide at that forum significant opportunity for the community to provide feedback on ways that the department and the city can improve. The way it provides its police services to the community. So I hope to, or we read adjourn on the eighteenth, be able to reconvene the subcommittee. Outline for them that framework for that forum and then identify a date probably near the last week in August to to conduct that forum. Unfortunately, it will be in a probably a Zoom format, virtual formats. But we will certainly do our best to to get the word out and encourage as many community members to participate as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for that update. That's going to take us to item H fifty H five, the city's information technology division, future projects. Begin, Mr. Hyatt, a comment on this. This is an area that I have a want to put a lot of attention to. Because this year we're we're shoved into coming up with ideas of communication. We're zooming and we're doing this and we're doing that. I got to tell you, this new technology is pretty, it's pretty snazzy. I'm going to mention my daughter's wedding again because it was on Zoom Live and there were people from Boston, Florida, Baltimore, all over California. Who attended the wedding, but weren't really there. And after the ceremony, everybody got to talk to my daughter via Zoom, so they were there, not in body, certainly they were there. So I think that when you grab on to this technology, and I appreciate the technology that we have now. I look forward to even better and improved technology with our community. With that, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as IT Manager Scott Sawan prepares the presentation, I just have a few introductory remarks. And certainly, we are all aware how rapidly technology is changing the way we live and the way we work, the way we play. And especially in this context, the way we provide governmental services. And this isn't new and and it's an ever changing process for us to identify how to utilize technology and technological advances. In a way that advances not just the efficiency and how we provide services, but the effectiveness and how we deliver those services to our community. And so what we wanted to do this evening was give Scott an opportunity to present to the council. What the city has been doing over the course of the last decade or so. And and what we're going to be doing in the foreseeable future to to use technology to better deliver the services. And do that in a more efficient manner. So Scott has done a great job to provide a fairly high level overview. There is a lot of information that they are going to be presenting. So welcome the council's sort of feedback and inquisition as to how we are using this technology. And even suggestions on ways that we can further invest and and use technology to support our community. So with that, Scott, would you like to walk through the presentation?
Let me unmute myself first. Thank you, Ken, council mayor. My name is Scott Sawan, the IT manager for the city of Woodland. I'm going to just jump right in here. So. IT staffing, we have full like six full time IT staff members. We're split into two divisions, system support and application support. I'll get into more of that here in a bit. And we're actually the same six people that we were when I started fifteen years ago in two thousand. And we're actually the same six people that we were when I started fifteen years ago in two thousand and five. So. We have an operating budget of $2 million. It's roughly sixty forty split between personnel and non-personnel. So system support, these are the guys that handle the office suite, email printers, phones, hardware like computer servers firewall. I'm not going to go through everything that they do, but kind of give you an idea of what they handle. And this is the infrastructure they support. So when I started the city fifteen years ago, we had roughly twenty servers with a little over one terabyte of storage. The number's grown exponentially over the years. We now have a hundred and five servers and thirteen hundred and forty eight terabytes of storage. So definitely grown. Some other fun facts, we processed 1.3 million emails last year. Obviously, most of those are spam. And we took over eleven thousand health test calls. So. Application support, this is the other side. These are the guys that handle all of our specialized applications. That's from our financial system like Tyler Eden. To our websites, data, things like that. Am I going to read this whole list? This isn't actually the full list, but you kind of get an idea of the scope that they cover here. Next, geographic information systems, otherwise known as GIS, is a framework for gathering, managing and analyzing data. A visual representation of data can help. Make it easier to understand. So traffic collision layer shown here in the lower left. Visually maps all traffic collisions and a heat map to allow traffic engineering to more easily identify trouble spots in the city. There have been over five hundred and sixty collisions annually over the past decade. So as you see, it's it's kind of neat. Public or I'm sorry, community development, the water quality map shown down here. Allows staff to share issues with contractors and vendors to help with the surface water project. So that's mainly been resolved, but another use of it. Public Works Department has been pushing GS internally and has the most data in the system. The department's work order management system, City Works ties directly into. GS. So up here we have the sewer pipes, which are videoed by Public Works staff every five years and rated. A color is assigned each rating, red, obviously the most severe issues. These ratings identify issues and help prioritize rehab and replace them of aging infrastructure. The city actually has two hundred miles of sewer. I was surprised by that stat and over twenty eight hundred manhole covers. So. Next, trees. Up here, we got the tree inventory. We have twenty thousand trees, which are GPS and include data such as the type, height, condition, even the cost to maintain. We also added in there things like plantings from special events like the Woodland Tree Foundation and Arbor Day. So the prior maps all are used by internal staff to manage the city's assets. But we do have many public maps, including a great bike map right here. With various bike friendly routes from a seven point five mile west loop to a three point five, three point four point three mile east loop. Overall, the city has seventeen miles designated by. All right. So back to our application support. This team is constantly looking for ways to inject technology into processes and procedures. So utilities is one that we looked at. Not too long ago, a city employee collected all commercial meter reads manually with an electronic meter. This process took about a month to collect. The city went with a wireless meter reading option, which allows us to roughly collect sixteen thousand meters in a matter of minutes. IT was responsible for tracking the location of all the meters and tying them into GIS and our financial. System for utility billing. What you see here next to it is a graph of our picture from Aqua Hawk, which allows residents to view consumption. Leak detection and set up alerts for. Various parts of their utility bill. So this graph shows the payment trend since two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty. The green and below are all automated payment options, which greatly increases efficiency and provides residents with. Many payment options. So obviously, the more automated we can get, the better. Next, we're going to move over to CDD and our planning and permitting. So we've gotten several services online, including business license renewal, inspection scheduling only for contractors currently. Inspection resulting and then permit and public parcel searches for public. So here's a shot of the permit and parcel searches for, I'm sorry, the. The permits for the Woodland Police Department. So that's all publicly available. Next, we've tried to enhance workflow. So down below here is a dashboard for our inspections department. They can. Map out all their inspections. GS actually will route them to the each of the inspections in the most efficient way possible. So that's been a great help. The future is business license applications and permit applications online. And lastly, electronic planner view is another big one we're trying to. Take care of. Next, the reliance on IT. Staff's reliance on IT has grown so much that city employees are unable to do their job without a computer. IT is constantly looking for that single point of failure. And how redundancy can be incorporated without over complicating. So network, for example, most city facilities have a redundant network connectivity. Our infrastructure is designed that if a physical server fails, the systems will still run. Power, there's battery backup and generator at our main facility and UPS is at the remote sites to keep that online. Cooling has been kind of one of those pain points for us. We've had some struggles with that, but we have a plan going forward. So we hope to get that one. Corrected by. Next, proactive support. So much like the check engine light in your car, we have a system in place which monitors our system. So we monitor over two hundred devices, over seven hundred metrics. The idea behind that is we see the issue before our users recognize it and hopefully can. Can fix it before something breaks. So next is cybersecurity. This is the big one. This has been an ongoing issue for us, ongoing for all IT departments. In the past, cybersecurity was more about downtime and annoyance. You'd get the pop up badge, you'd get the malware, you'd get the the system shutdowns that tried to shut down the network. Didn't really break or hurt much. Now the goal is to monetize those attacks. How can we get money out of people? The number one way is ransomware. So. What the hackers, bad actors will do is infect a unsuspecting user's computer. Encrypted all the files on that computer and then demand a ransom for the key to unlock them. So. That's how they're monetizing those. You always hear about those on the news. So in twenty seventeen, there was a hundred and eighty four million worldwide attacks and that number grew to two hundred and four in twenty eighteen. So our weakest link is staff. Obviously, they can keep sending emails to staff trying to get them to click on one. You send enough, somebody's going to click on it. So. We actually trained our staff. We had them take a mandatory cybersecurity training course. Ken was quick to point out that did include a test that you are required to pass in order to consider it complete. So. It wasn't something simple where you can kind of sleep there while the video was playing by. And then obviously, we do continually test our users by. Sending them fake phishing emails to see what they clicked on and try to educate them. So next, next generation protection, both our antivirus and firewall are known as next generation protection, which goes beyond. Known file based signatures. They use a combination of behavioral behavioral protection and machine learning. So threats can be anticipated and stopped. So we've had those for several years. They've been working great for us. I don't think we've had a single virus outbreak in the past three years since we've had it. So that's that's great news. I'm sure staff would. Like to claim that to staff training, but we like to think our antivirus is definitely keeping us safe. Network isolation. So the idea behind this is if Ken clicks on a suspicious email and infects his computer, it's not going to infect somebody at. The MSC or at the police department. So we try to isolate the network so it does not spread. And then lastly, multi factor authentication. This was a requirement of DOJ for the police department and it's something we look at expanding to the rest of the city. The idea behind it is, well, I'm sure most of you have to use it when you log into your bank account. They send the passcode to your phone and you have to type in that passcode in order to to continue on. Speaking of virus, so how do you send everyone to work from home at a moment's notice? This was the challenge IT was tasked with. So we had a telecommute policy from two thousand and two and we had three on our laptops and. Everyone was sent home. It made made things a little tough for us. So the perk that we have is we embrace desktop virtualization. Now, computer virtualization is not a new technology, but it's more commonly found in the data center than on a desktop. So instead of putting a desktop computer on every employee's desk, we have a pool of servers, took a nice picture here. Which runs the city's desktops and the users connect into their desktop via terminal on their desk. So the process or security, that terminal on the desk contains no data. So someone can walk away with it. There's nothing, nothing lost. Management, it's a lot easier to manage everything in one place than spread out throughout the city. Deployment, back in the day when somebody would get a virus and infect their computer ransomware, we were able to. Shut that computer off and push out a new computer in a matter of minutes versus hours. And lastly, they're greener. We don't have computers on every desktop sucking up electricity. We just have our handful of servers here and the thin clients on the desktop. The cons are the cost. Obviously, the initial cost of buying the infrastructure was not cheap, but our desktop life cycle is five years. So over the five years, it averages out to be about the same. And then lastly, admin learning curve. It's not easy to find someone that knows how to support these. I personally have never been trained. I think my staff prefers that I stay away from it. So unless they have to fix later. So. So our IT infrastructure was actually upgraded in two thousand and twenty. We actually finished it in February of two thousand and twenty. So. We were kind of perfectly set up for this. We sent users home with the instructions on how to install an application on their computer. They install that application and they can connect to their desktop just like they're at work. It's completely isolated. So if there are viruses on their home computer, none of those get through. And if they have them on their work computer, they can't get to their home computer. So. We met that challenge head on and it's been working well for us. Next, evolving technology needs. Obviously, things, more things seem to head towards IT. For example, Wi-Fi didn't used to be a thing that we handled back in the day. Now we cover over three hundred thousand square feet of office space. Security cameras, that's one that was installed typically with the buildings. Now the new ones come with the blue cable that you plug into them, the network cable and. Someone said, hey, that's IT's problem now. So we took on security cameras. Phones kind of followed that same same path. We were with the county for the longest time. We switched over, did it ourselves. They are voice over IP voice over network. So it's something that we took on. Audio visual. So conference rooms back in the day used to be a table and chairs. Now it's a table, it's chairs, it's a TV on the wall, a computer. An audio video system. Now we're setting up Zoom rooms in there. So it's definitely evolved. Same with the council chambers. So the council chambers back in two thousand and eight, something we took on, the budget downturn. They canceled the contract for support. I think someone walked in the back room, looked at all the equipment and said, yeah, this looks like an IT thing. You're going to handle this. And we've kind of been bandaging it together for the last ten years. We actually just completed an upgrade of that room. Recently, I'm sure you guys have all seen the back room. It's definitely changed from the eighties to today. Remote work, obviously, that's just getting people working at home. That's something that we're supporting. You send everyone home. You got to help them with their home computers and their home network. So. Once we got through that, that was fairly easy. Remote meetings, this is a new one for us. So their picture here is of what Jay's back room looks like. This is what it takes to run one of these meetings. So it's a lot of work, but we've kind of, I think we've mastered it from our first meeting to today. I think we've made a lot of progress. So. Next, future IT projects. So back when I created this slideshow six months ago for Paul. Police records management was a new system that we were looking at rolling out or in the process of rolling out. It's going to go live here sometime next month if I'm not mistaken. Next, the Tyler Eden replacement. We're going to embark on a long and expensive journey to replace our finance and land management system, currently known as Tyler Eden. Ultimately, it will help improve technology and efficiencies in the city. Upgrade and expand network connectivity. So as we expand, we have a pool and a relocated fire station. We need to get connectivity to those. So as soon as we hear about those, we work with CDD to get. Try to figure out how we get fiber optics to those sites. So it's so far we've had good plan of success on that. More cameras. So we got about a hundred more cameras scheduled for two thousand and twenty. It's one of those ongoing things. It seems like it's it's never going to end. But there's a lot of old cameras in the city that need to be replaced. USA marking. So eight one one, as you saw up in the GIS layers, we have a lot of infrastructure underground. So we're modernizing the USA marking process with GIS. To give you an idea of how many we have, just in the past thirty days, there's been over four hundred USA requests. So. Keeps them pretty busy. So citizen problem reporter, that's what you see kind of flickering by on the side over here. This is our answer to a replacement mobile app. The mobile app was cutting this recent budget, so we had to come up with something new. This is a GIS product that we actually got with an upgrade we recently. Added to our system and it allows you to do the same features. You can report issues, you can get notified, you can take pictures. So. We hope to have this rolled out by August, middle of August, when our mobile app goes away. So more to come on this. And then lastly, the council web updates. I'm going to just move to the next slide here. Rich doesn't know it, but he volunteered to be on my slide. We've redesigned these pages. So we have the district map up here. It shows his district. You can click on. This map and you can actually type in your address and find out what district you're in. We also have all the appointments and the subcommittees he's a part of. And then there's the contact info. We're hoping to add some updates to it, a blog or a web feed from Facebook or something in the future. So that's that should be coming in the near future, but it's still a work in progress. So. That's all I got. Anybody questions, comments? Or silence?
We're just trying to unmute Scott that we're trying to be stewards of our noise. So thank you for that update. It's a lot of the things you're doing there. Multitask, it looks like. I did have a couple, I had a question for you regarding cybersecurity. You mentioned the weakest link. How does a cyber crook? Decide who to pick on, so to speak. Is that what happens? They pick on the weakest link?
So it's it's hard to say. A lot of times you you just cast a wide net and you see who bites. I think that's part of it. There are more coordinated attacks where you actually. They will go follow a person's social media page and direct their phishing attack to them. I believe they call that spear phishing. So there's various attempts, but I know Twitter got hit recently with one where they. Were able to get in through some employees in a very creative attack and took over a bunch of Twitter accounts.
And and without divulging any kind of secret stuff. Can you give us the level of protection that we have regarding this ransom stuff? I know that some jurisdictions have paid out money, hospitals, you know. Governments, businesses, that does concern me that we're at risk for that.
So we definitely are at risk. We always say here in IT, it's not a matter of if, but when. We know there is no amount of defense that can protect us. So we do everything possible, follow all the best practices, keep. Offline backups. We keep our security as up to date as possible, but. Unfortunately, it's just one of those things. We we work closely with other cities and other cities have been hit. We try to understand how they got infected and. Try to minimize that.
Thank you. And then my last question was the council's website. We've talked about this in private with Paul and that is. This, what does this mean to the individual council member are going to be able to do when everything is up and running?
So when it's all up and running, but right now we have, obviously, we have one set up for you and it'll allow you to go in there and. Post messages and people, citizens can subscribe to your updates and they will get email. Updates of every time you post. It's like a blog essentially that you can subscribe to.
And then my last question was, would this be interfaced with other mediums?
So we have looked at at other options, trying to integrate. Obviously, having people update a whole bunch of different places does not make sense. So we're trying to see if we can pull in some Facebook feeds or stuff like that that other people, other council members are currently using just to simplify things for everybody.
And for the council members, the the idea behind this is that you can log into your. Right, right. And, and for the council members, the, the idea behind this uh is that you can uh log into your uh personal page and let your constituents know what you've been doing, the meetings you've been attending, uh, very much like we do orally at our meetings. But this can be uh, you know, updated uh hourly if you want, uh whatever it takes to get the message out to the community, the things that you've been doing uh as council members. A lot, a lot of folks think that we just have these meetings twice, uh, twice a month. But uh, we know that's not true. Uh, that is almost a daily thing that we're doing, one thing or another, one meeting or another. And I think people wanna know what we're doing in those meetings. Uh, so that's the idea behind that and uh get your message out there. But so does any other member of council have a question for, or comment for Scott? Apparently, there's none, Scott. All out.
Well, thank you, Scott. This is Councilmember Rodriguez. Yes, I, I appreciate that presentation. Very modern day. Looking forward to it.
Great.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes, do we have a hand raised?
I do have a hand raised. It's James Lica Hernandez.
Okay.
James, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I spoke earlier. I thought I taken down my hand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Over on this topic, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, considering the member of the public had a comment on this particular topic on IT. Apparently, there's none. So once again, Scott, thank you very much. Uh, I don't understand how you keep up with this stuff, but that's you get paid to do, I suppose.
Thank you.
That takes us to um item I, the consent calendar. We have items I six through I 16. Is there a member of the council who would like to uh comment or pull an item from consent?
Need to pull the contract for Ken, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's been pulled only for the purpose of revision.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Rodriguez. I have a question on um make sure I got the right item number. The item on the turf replacement, item 15.
Question is for Mr. Hyatt.
Um, Mr. City Manager, I, I want to make sure that I have um the correct information for the turf replacement. Um, as far as what type of material will be used to uh, to replace the turf at the sports park? I know that um Christine Engel replied in email and I don't, I'm having trouble locating the email. Um, if you may please address that, so I can have a little more clarity on which one we selected.
Certainly. Um, so if the council recalls, there was a discussion maybe last fall the use of um rubberized uh fill material for synthetic turf fields. Uh, as part of our due diligence process, we actually investigated alternative fill materials. Uh, we had members of our U-Sports community actually uh go out and test and look at other fields that have alternative fill. Uh, and where we landed was uh recommendation to use a combination of cork and sand fill as an alternative to uh rubberized fill. Um, so this is really, I think, uh, the trend and the standard that uh all communities and, and sports fields are going to now. So uh, let me know if that does not answer the question. I believe Brent Myers is also available and he could help uh provide additional uh clarity.
Uh, great. That, that answers my question, actually. I appreciate it. Um, and looking at the report, I think in the future, let's, and I don't know if I maybe didn't see it or, and it, and it did happen. Um, let's try to get the Sustainability Advisory Committee um comments. And like I said, they may have commented on this item or this item might have gone before them, but um I'm happy with the answer. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Does any of the member of the council have a question or comment on one of the uh items of I six through I 16?
Um, Mayor Landsberg, I um, let me know when you want me to address the city manager's employment agreement.
Let me, let me go to there. Let me, right after this comment, I do have a comment on I eight. Yes, that's the Americans with Disability Act 30th anniversary. I too wanted to thank uh Councilmember Rodriguez for bringing this to council's attention. We'd be pleased to have this proclamation uh for this uh 30th anniversary. Uh, so many Americans have benefited, but so many have not. Uh, we've done a lot, but we have a ways to go. One of my own family members is, is disabled and some of the features of the ADA have helped him tremendously, but I think we have a ways to go. Uh, this is not uh gonna go away. And so I, I hope to see a 60th anniversary and 100th anniversary and keep improving on the ADA. So thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, for bringing that up. Um, and also to Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez for bringing that up, as well as the attorney from ACLU. Um, so at this point, uh, city attorney, Kara, Lita, we're gonna talk about uh the revision to uh Ken Hyatt's contract.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so on your agenda on the consent calendar is item um I nine, the employment agreement to have uh Ken Hyatt serve as your city manager. Um, the agreement as drafted provides that Mr. Hyatt will serve as city manager beginning on Saturday, August 1st, 2020, receiving a monthly salary of $19,000 with the two-year term for the agreement, with the option to extend the agreement for a third year. Um, in the course of discussing the terms of this employment agreement, uh, Mr. Hyatt proposed um a concession that is similar to or is being requested by city employees citywide um who have been asked or have already taken a 5% pay cut. Um, the city council discussed in closed session some potential language to address a similar 5% pay cut. Um, and what we would propose to do is to add to the employment agreement a new section 15, which would be titled "One-Time Concessions", and I'm going to read the language into the record. Um, that new paragraph would read as follows. "In consideration of the unanticipated negative budget consequences caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, personnel-related cost savings are being spread out throughout the city. Effective through June 30th, 2021, the provisions of Section 5D concerning the city's match of employees' deferred compensation contribution shall be suspended. Also effective through June 30th, 2021, employee agrees to pay or reimburse to the city 3% of the city's retirement contribution to CalPERS. The suspended concessions provided for in this section 15 will automatically be restored on July 1st, 2021. However, in the event that the city's general fund's sales tax revenues, which do not include special district sales taxes, are forecasted, which, which is expected to occur around, on or around December 15th, 2020, if those exceed $14 million for fiscal year 2020, 2021, all concessions provided for in this section 15 shall cease and shall no longer be in effect." So that language would be added to the end of the employment agreement. Those two concessions are to not have the city match um Mr. Hyatt's deferred compensation contribution, which is 2% of his salary, and then to have the employee, Mr. Hyatt, pay um 3% of the city's share of the purse contribution, which equals 5%, um which again is what has been asked of employees throughout the city. So Mr. Hyatt is amenable to that specific language and um, as I said, suggested the concept. So that's the only change that um is being recommended for the employment agreement that is on your agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, any member of council have a question for Kara on the amendment to number nine? Hearing done. Is there a motion then to uh approve items I six through uh I 16 with the amendment number nine as described by uh a city attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
Stallard moves.
Hold on.
Sorry to interrupt. This is Councilwoman Rodriguez. I think I got a little confused on the comment period. Um, and, and so I'll, I'll just add to uh the, the city manager contract. Uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Hyatt. I know that uh him and you, my council colleagues, have known that I've been very passionate about the um, about the process we use to uh, to select the city manager. And so, you know, I, I, I have faith in you, Mr. Hyatt. I know you're gonna do a, a job well done. And in, in the future for, you know, for my council colleagues or, you know, council in the future and, and staff, uh, I recommend that we have a, a process, right? A process, um, recruitment, uh, an open process for the community. Um, nonetheless, there's work to be done, and uh I know that uh Mr. Hyatt is, is gonna get us there. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other comments on items I six through I 16, the amendment to number nine?
For Barajas. Yes, um, thank you, Mayor Landsberg. I just wanna wish uh Ken Hyatt the best um with the, the city manager position. Um, I've worked well with Ken for the last six years. I vouch for his strengths, um, his commitment to the city, uh, commitment to staff and our residents. He's worked tremendously hard during the COVID-19 situation. He's just like a quarterback going down the field and he's just been scoring touchdowns with our team. And now that the council um might look a little different moving forward after November's elections, we need strong leadership, strong strength at the helm, at the city manager position. And his dedication and his commitment to our city is gonna get us there. So I approve of this uh action item and I wish him the best.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Ringo Pro Tem, please.
Yes, I'm prepared to offer the motion that you proposed with the addition of the fact that the June 16th minutes were corrected uh prior to the issuance of the agenda. So I would make the motion that we uh adopt the consent agenda with the uh recommended changes to the manager's contract, item nine, and amended men's of June 16th, which are part of item six.
Thank you. Is there a second on uh the Mayor Pro Tem's motion?
I'll say it.
Second by Barajas. Madam Clerk, a voice vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Stallard?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar items through 60 with the requested amendments have been approved uh with a five zero roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
That takes us to I 17. This is a public hearing on the waste management liens. Uh, and before we get going, Madam Clerk, have you received any messages from the public on item J 17?
No, I have not.
Are there currently any hands raised?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Will there be a staff presentation on this, Mr. Hyatt?
Uh, I will ask that our city clerk, Ana Gonzalez, do a brief presentation. Uh, this is an annual item that you're familiar with, but I think a warrant, um, a quick presentation by Ana. So Ana, would you mind walking the council through uh this action?
Not at all. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is, um, this public hearing is the annual waste management um liens process. Um, and the uh public hearing is required before the liens can be uh attached to the property taxes. Uh, what is not included in the staff report is um the number of accounts that are being leaned this year, which is about average. It's 371 total accounts. Um, the total amount is 181,349 dollars. And in the staff report, I did mention that there's a $59 recording fee. And if you add that to the 371 accounts, then the total uh amount for the principal and the lien fee is 203,238 dollars. So this is just the annual public hearing for any protests, and I don't see any emails, any raised hands, any voicemails that came in.
Thank you. Is any member of the council on this uh item? Hearing done. I, I think I need to open the public hearing officially.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Fernandez here. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't wanna make too big of a deal about this, but I just feel uh like it's kind of unfortunate. You know, I know we see this every year and it's just uh, it's tough to see this when uh we take into consideration the current economic circumstances a lot of people are facing. Um, and so, you know, although ideally um we would give residents struggling to pay their bills uh some reprieve under the circumstance, I understand that it might not be appropriate uh in this particular instance or uh the following agenda item. But uh I just wanted to know that I just think it's unfortunate that we've uh got this before the council. And um I know it's something we're contractually obligated to, to do um pursuant to our agreement with waste management. Anyways, that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna, Mr. Stallard.
Please have the public hearing first.
Okay.
Uh, please.
I'm gonna, here, public hearing. I can't hear you.
I just said, why do you close, open and close the public hearing first?
I'm, I'm gonna do that. So I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask one more time, Madam Clerk, are there any uh members of the public on this particular item?
No, there are none.
Yes, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any further comments by members?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I feel we should, we should proceed to adopt this action as part of our being a responsible partner with waste management uh on the issue of trash pickup in the community. But I would also point out that uh this is fairly routine. Uh, houses don't typically get sold because this thing gets put in place. The lien will be there a long time for any action like that would be taken, hopefully, time enough for people to take corrective action. And it's a fact that some people don't only pay their bills every six months. So they end up being leaned every year. The same names are on the list, just the way they do their billing. So with that, I would, I respectfully move adoption of the action.
Motion by Stallard. Is there a second?
Second by Rodriguez.
Second by Rodriguez. We have a motion by Stallard, second by Rodriguez. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Stallard?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing item number 17 with the resolution number 7529 carries on a five zero roll call vote.
Thank you. That's gonna take us to item J 18, a public hearing on weed abatement program. Um, and Madam Clerk, have you seen any emails or phone calls from members of the public on J 18?
No, I have not.
Okay. And, and member of the council have a question or comment on J 18? I, I have, I have a question, probably uh combination of Eric and the city manager. And it's this, um, these lots that get the weed abatement. Um, I guess my question is, are these repeat offenders? It looks to me that these are the same names that come up every year. And, and if they are, what can be done uh to get these folks uh moving on these uh weed abate?
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will uh ask either far martial lawing or complain to respond as to what our process looks like. We have made improvements over the last several years to uh get ahead of and reduce the amount of uh time that lots are in a unacceptable condition. Uh, that said, we do have uh, you know, those repeat offenders and those property owners that uh simply uh ignore those or for whatever reason do not comply, and uh we're forced to go in and use our own resources. Um, and this process allows us to reimburse or get reimbursed for those costs. So uh, I don't know, Emily or Eric, do you have any additional remarks to add? Any additional measures we could potentially implement to address the uh, the folks that uh continue to be problematic?
Thanks, Ken. Yeah, um, so just to, to address that, they are usually the regular offenders, you know, that, that typically don't mow their undeveloped parcels. And unfortunately, in, in some conversations we've had with some of these parcel owners, they actually prefer the city to abate the lot. So it's hard to have a conversation when they actually just prefer us to do it for them rather than them mowing their own property. I will say for this particular list that we have, we made extra notification. Not only was it the original letter sent out early April of two thousand and nineteen, we also sent out additional letters at the beginning of August of two thousand and nineteen, certified receipt, making sure that they knew absolutely that this was required back in June. And these ones you're seeing on the list are the ones that continue to not abate their lots. So this is why we're moving forward with this process that will allow us to at least be reimbursed for the cost of abating those properties.
Thank you, Emily. Which brings me to, I thought it was the same repeat offenders, which leads me to believe that perhaps as a council, we should look at this topic sometime in the future and perhaps, you know, roll up the sleeves a little bit and come up with a resolution that these folks are going to mitigate the issues. It just takes one fire to devastate a community that these folks are being negligent in, in keeping their properties safe. This goes along with the earlier comment, I believe that also member Rodriguez had regarding code enforcement, that perhaps we should take some stronger measures with some of these people who are essentially weaseling out of their duties as property owners. That's my comment on that. Any other member of the council have a comment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
But I opened the.
Sorry, sorry. This Councilman Rodriguez, no, I, I just want to, want to echo, echo that on, on, you know, on, on the code enforcement efforts. You know, we, we have to keep a keen eye on, you know, those residences that have been a nuisance or, you know, that have created the problem for, for years or haven't taken care of it, care of it, whatever it may be. I, I, I will say that, you know, in, in working with, with Minnie Garcia out there, she, she works really well with the community and also addressing and making sure she talks to folks about, you know, what, what circumstances they might be in and what their financial situation might be or what issues they're encountering to getting weeds out of the way or what you may have. So I, I think we've been doing a diligent job and working with the community. And so I think it's time to, you know, to, to enforce the code out there on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other member of the council have a comment or question? If not, I'm going to open the public comment period. Perk, once again, any messages or comments on this or hands raised?
None.
None. In that case, we're going to close the public comment period. And is, is there a motion?
This to approve, Angel?
Motion by Barajas. Is there a second? I need a second.
And by Rodriguez.
Second by Rodriguez. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Aye.
Thank you. Item eighteen, public hearing for weed abatement, number seventy-five thirty, carries on a five zero roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's going to take us to item K and the city manager's report on fire inspection fee waivers. I believe this is going to be a presentation also by Emily. Is that correct, Mr. Hyatt?
That is correct. And before I give her the mic, I just wanted to give credit to Chief Zane, his staff, and Emily for identifying an opportunity to support our local business community that's been impacted, as we know, very deeply in many ways by the pandemic over the last six months. So this item sort of came out of their efforts to identify a way to, even if it's a small, to an individual business, but a way to, to assist them in financial times of trouble. So with that, I will ask Emily to introduce the item to the council and welcome any comments back. Actually, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Eric Zane, your fire chief. I'll be starting out and presenting this item, and Emily will be assisting if there's any questions that I can't answer regarding the community risk reduction and our current fee structures. So as the, the local ordinance and the COVID nineteen response continues, we know it's had a dramatic impact on our local businesses. Little background, the Woodland Fire Department and our Community Risk Reduction Division, they complete about twenty-five hundred inspections, building-related inspections, and plan reviews annually. And so we're discussing this evening a subset of inspections that they conduct on a annual basis. Around five hundred and twenty permitted mandated inspections that must be completed annually per the fire code. And these impact businesses that have permits for assemblies, for hot welding work, high pile storage, hazardous materials that require prevention or, or community risk reduction personnel to go out and inspect annually. And we do have a, a fee program set to where, you know, the permits cost between around two hundred dollars all the way up to eight hundred dollars, depending upon how many permits they have pulled annually. The businesses that we are really concerned about and are, are looking at assisting are the ones that have really been impacted by the COVID nineteen response and have been shut down for a period of time during the shelter in place order and have been severely hampered in their revenues. And those fall into the category of assemblies. Obviously, we don't want people together. They haven't been together. Any restaurant that has an occupancy load of over fifty, you're talking about banquet halls, large meeting spaces, the movie theater, those are all considered assemblies. And they have been hit hardest. We conduct around one hundred and thirty-five assembly inspections annually. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, a hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and twenty dollars annually for the assembly inspection. Some businesses may have more permits associated with them. Again, we're not talking about a ton of money, but we are sensitive to the fact that there's been significant impacts over the last several months. The Community Risk Reduction Bureau has generated about three hundred and seventy to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue over the last few fiscal years. We do, we have taken into consideration, there's a potential of about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue loss. Now, that's a very conservative figure. And we'll be monitoring that closely if the fee waiver is approved this evening. Consideration for the fee waiver, the requirements for the fee waiver in the proclamation, they're very similar to that of the commercial rent moratorium that was been put in place or had been put in place by the city. And so it, it does require the, the business owner to provide information to us regarding the impacts of COVID nineteen. Either they had been sick, their employees had been sick, they'd been taking care of sick children or had childcare issues. They were required to be compliant with the shelter in place order. Or they had, you know, extraordinary out-of-cost or out-of-pocket medical expenses due to COVID nineteen or possibly even closed just due to childcare and due to school closures. Additionally, if, if they aren't able to necessarily prove that, if they had applied for any CARES Act funding under the Paycheck Protection Program, the Federal COVID Aid and Relief Economic Securities Act, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, as well as other loan programs through the Federal Small Business Administration or private loans and guarantees, if they can prove any of those items, they would be eligible for the fee waiver. So essentially, if it's passed this evening, the, the form that we've created will be available electronically on our website once the inspection is completed. In order to make sure that the business is safe, we want to keep them in business. They can apply that fourteen days from the completion of the inspection to essentially fill out the form and submit it to the Fire Department Community Risk Reduction Bureau, in which the Fire Marshal will review it and approve it. Or if it's not approved, it can be appealed to the city manager at the building owners, or the, the, excuse me, the business owner's request. So those are the the items on tonight's resolution and our staff report. Oh, additionally, the, this fee waiver would be in place until the end of the emergency declaration.
Thank you, Eric. Did Emily want to add something?
Good evening. You know, I think Eric covered everything that we, that we had discussed when we were looking at this waiver. I think it most, it came into play because we were cognizant of the effects that all of the businesses, especially the assemblies, like Chief Zane has mentioned, that have been impacted by this COVID event that continues. And we want to make sure that we're balancing the safety of our community while being sensitive to the financial impact that has been made throughout this whole event.
Thank you, Emily. Does any member of the council have a comment or question for either Ken, Eric, or Emily?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Rodriguez. I'd like to say that I feel that this is a win-win situation here. I appreciate the efforts by Eric and Emily, and I think our businesses are going to feel empowered and, and, you know, feel that backing from, from the council and, and the department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say a couple of words, Mayor Landsberg.
Councilmember Barajas, please.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Eric, our chief, and also Emily for the presentation. I do also think that this is going to be good, is going to receive well by our small businesses. The good thing that I like about this is that the inspection is going to occur, and they have to qualify for the inspection. And then there's another process to ma- make sure that they meet the application fee waiver. And so I think that this is yet another example of how the city council and the fire department is working with small businesses here and within to try to provide some relief. So thank you, and thank you for the leadership that you have both provided.
Thank you. You can, Barajas. Anybody else? I have a question for Eric and/or Emily. What is a small business? Go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. You know, I think in, in order to make sure that we have equity throughout the, the city, we're not going to necessarily define small business, and Chief Zane, you can correct me if, if you want to add to that. But I think as far as going out and doing our inspections and, and offering this waiver, we will, we will offer it equally. Because small business, because you brought up that question, it brings up a good point. That small business can, can vary depending on the industry or the business within the city. So that's the plan with this waiver.
As you, as you know, Eric, Emily, there's been a lot of negative comments and negative publicity about companies that got this money and didn't use it effectively or wisely and, and, and shut out essentially small business mom and pops on Main Street. And I want to see the those small local businesses that do not have a wealth of equity or a wealth of shareholders, they have to protect. And I saw your application. Honestly, to me, it's a bit weak. It, it simply asks a couple of questions and doesn't invite additional comments as to why they should deserve or get this to waiver. I could see waiving for some and deferring for others. But I, I think you need to look at your application that truly needs this relief, gets it, while others that shouldn't get it, don't get it, and just stand in line. It reminds me almost of the utility assistance that we don't ask enough questions. Some ended, money's gone so quickly. I could see a lot of businesses simply raising their hands and that, I mean, honestly, who hasn't been affected by COVID in one way or that has, my own. But that doesn't mean I'm going to be looking for a handout. We need to be, make sure that these folks truly need the service, need, need the waiver, and we should look at it in that fashion and not simply, you know, do away with its revenue that's certainly needed in, in our budget, especially this, next, this year and next year. And I did hear Eric's comment that this could be approximately a hundred thousand dollars, but I foresee it being more. People get a little greedy out there. That's just my, that's just my comment. Any other member of the council have a question or comment?
Yeah, Fernandez here.
Fernandez, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, Mayor Landsberg, I'm a little more capable of fighting those attorney urges that you and I both have. But that was a great point. You know, I, I, when I read the application too, I, I, you know, didn't like the uses, usage of financial hardships. I mean, we, we need to make sure that we define the parameters that would allow this reprieve because, like, what if Target, you know, comes through and says, hey, I want relief? You know, can they claim financial hardship? What, what does that mean? You know, what does financial hardship mean? Hopefully, our partners like that won't, and community members won't abuse this. But, you know, I, I, you know, I, I would like to see, like, a more defined application to, to ensure that we define, sorry, more defined parameters in this application.
This, this is Cara. We tried to craft the resolution language in a manner that did provide for the business to have some type of financial hardship. And so the criteria that Eric read out earlier could be actually put into the application and just kind of bolstered to put some more of that into the application so that the resolution does match the application. However, when we were looking at this issue before in the context of the commercial eviction moratoria, we really did struggle with how to come up with financial criteria that staff could easily apply, and that would be fair. So for example, if we were to look at year-over-year revenue, for example, that automatically precludes businesses that have just started from being eligible. There's just a lot of sort of issues that came up every time we tried to really drill down and get to how to really carefully and kind of surgically figure out with any exact tutor precision how to determine if a business really was suffering. And so this criteria that's in the resolution is, as Eric mentioned, the exact same criteria that we had put into the commercial eviction moratoria ordinance for exactly that reason, just because A, it's difficult to come up with the criteria, and then B, I think it's, you know, asking staff to necessarily be going through a lot of financial documents that were, were coming in didn't necessarily to be the most productive use of time either. So that's where we landed on that.
Right on. Thanks, Cara.
Thank you for that, Cara. Any other member of the council have a question or comment?
I'll make a motion to approve if there are any other comments.
Motion by Fernandez? Motion by Fernandez and second by Barajas?
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes, in consideration of my comments.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Aye.
Thank you. Item nineteen, COVID nineteen waiver of fee. Thank you. Item nineteen, COVID-nineteen waiver of fee inspection permit fees. Resolution number seventy-five thirty-one carries on a five-zero roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
That does take us to item L on the agenda, which is adjournment. As you know, we will be starting recess starting tomorrow. We expect to on August eighteenth, the way it looks, and probably be still on Zooming or whatever platform the IT folks come up with, but we will see you then. Also want to end with welcoming our new city manager, Ken Hyatt, as the permanent city manager for the City of Woodland. Brings a lot of skills to our community. And like somebody mentioned earlier, I think Paul left on Fri- the pandemic on Monday and shoved into the fire immediately, not only with the pandemic, all the things that went along with the pandemic. And then a month later, a solid rest, and it just keeps going on and on and on. And I want to say to Ken, you have stepped up to the plate. You haven't struck it out. You've done very, very well. And we look forward to working with you in the future. And it does look, in light of the news that we have today, that I may be the sole voice here in the next, who knows? We wish Mr. Stallard luck in his election. I wish Councilmember Fernandez well, and Councilmember Rodriguez well. And of course, we're going to lose Angel Brahaus to the Board of Supervisors. So that's it for tonight. Does anybody have a closing comment before we adjourn?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could we adjourn in memory of the civil rights icon and civil steward Congressman John Lewis?
Yeah. Are you making that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Representative John Lewis, who passed away this week? Second? Second by all members of the council. And this will just be an, I vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.